Good afternoon. Notice of a public meeting of the City Commission of the City of Brownsville pursuant to Chapter 551, Title V of the Texas Government Code. The Texas Open Meetings Act notice is hereby given that the City Commission of the City of Brownsville, Texas, in accordance with Article 5, Section 12 of the Charter of said city will convene a regular meeting on Tuesday, August 1st, 2017, at 6:00 PM in the Commission Chambers on the second floor of Brownsville City Hall, Old Federal Building, located at 1001 East Elizabeth Street, Brownsville, Cameron County, Texas. We will begin with a pledge of allegiance. Everyone, please stand.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic of which we stand, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty, justice, and all other things. Honored Texas flag, I pledge allegiance to thee, Texas, one state under God, one indivisible.
Let's pray. Father God, we thank you for your love, your grace, and your mercy. And Lord, we ask you to help each of us to share your love with those that we meet, and when we disagree, to do it with love. Lead and guide each of us, Lord God, and as we enter the budget process, we ask you to lead and guide every department head, lead and guide those that are working specifically on the budget. And, Lord, help us all to come together in your unity. Lead and guide our mayor and commissioners here tonight and every presenter, in the name of Jesus Christ. Amen.
I have no report for this meeting, please.
No mayor's activity report. Number two, commissioners, activity update. Anyone?
Okay, presentations.
The presentation, we will begin with the employee of the month.
Unfortunately, Charlie Kabler's brother passed away today, and we sent our prayers and our thoughts to him, but Pete, our deputy city manager, will be handling this agenda for today.
Thank you, Mayor. Honorable mayor, members of the City Commission, our employee of the month for August of 2017 is Mr. Eddie Rivera. He started as a mechanic for the Parks and Recreation Department in December of 1992. Since then, he has worked his way up where now he is the maintenance supervisor for the Planning and Development Services Department. He has worked a total of 25 years for the city. In fact, this is the second time being elected as employee of the month. Eddie goes above and beyond on what he does. Not too long ago, when we had a flood here in downtown streets, I just happened to be here on a Sunday, as I was leaving City Hall, I encounter Eddie at the very, at the first floor, and I said, "What are you doing here?" The first thing he says, "I'm checking on the building. I want to make sure that nothing, everything's okay, nothing is flooded." So he's the type, that's the type of employee that Eddie is. And so he goes beyond expectations. He's a problem solver and a great mentor and leader to his crew. Of course, we're very fortunate to have him. As employee of the month, Eddie will get a Ritz watch, a lapel pin, a great flag, and of course, you are eligible to be employee of the year during our banquet in December. So you want to say a few words?
Commissioners, everybody, good afternoon. I really worked for the city for 25 years, as you heard from Mr. Pete Gonzalez, and I'm very happy to work for the city, a such a beautiful city, and I enjoy it. You see me here every day, and I like, this is my home. It's 90% of the day I spend it here, and I enjoy it, every day, every day, and you'll keep seeing me here for, I would say, a good 10 more years.
How about another 25, Eddie? How about another 25?
Thank you.
Eddie, it shows, I happen to have known you for a long time, and every time that I see you, you've got a smile on your face, and you're doing something that's helping the city, and you do it with joy and love. So, thank you very much. How about a round of applause?
Yeah. And I enjoy using that bike around downtown.
I know. I see you as well. Good for you.
Thank you.
Okay, Main Street Advisory Board.
At this time, we have the-
Annual report.
The Main Street Advisory Board Annual Report.
Good evening, honorable mayor and city commission. I'd like to introduce Larry Holtzman. He's the chair of the Main Street Advisory Board, and he's here tonight to present our annual report.
Thank you. Thank you, Larry, for being here.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, commissioners. It's a pleasure to be here. This is our first report on Main Street. Thanks to the Texas Historic Commission and the City of Brownsville, your leadership, we now have a Main Street Board. And we have established guidelines that were brought to us by the Texas Historic Commission, and their approaches, the four-point approach, that's organization, promotion, design, and economic vitality. And I want to say that we have a board that is very active, and I'd like to mention their names. There's Ed Saganowicz. Ana Hernandez is here. Do you want to say hello, Ana? There's Ana. Myself, Larry Jokel, young man. Marco Choa, very active in downtown. Avi Schwartz is here. There he is. Thank you. And Luis Urceta, who is an interesting young man who established the Work Pub on Elizabeth Street, a unique business that shows what can happen. It may not be the standard business one thinks about, but it's very, very unique. This map shows what we are calling Main Street right now as part of our efforts and our focus, and it mainly goes from 8th Street to 14th Street in the central business district, and we hope to expand that. We have a very unique opportunity here in Brownsville, and it's already being shown what can happen, and your leadership is showing what is already started with the Market Square, but we have other, if you go driving around downtown, you see other businesses being restored and brought back to historic significance. We'd like to see more of that. The idea of a ma, a strong Main Street, we need to find a mixed use. We have depended so much in the past on one type of business, and we're seeing restaurants start up here, we're seeing art galleries. This is what we're hoping to have, is a mixed use, and the investment in the district is very important. We have had some nice events, the ribbon cutting, there's a very good restaurant, Tara's Bar and Grill. Of course, I mentioned the Work Pub by Luis. We have Art Studio, B.C. Bistro, excellent fish restaurant, and Maria Bonita Boutique there on St. Charles Street. And the others, we're going to have soon, another park, parking days where we occupy for a few hours downtown, turn the parking, parking space into an event. It's a lot of fun. You'll be seeing more about that. One benefit we've had from the Texas Historic Commission is their resources are now available for, to us for the first time, and it was very evident when they helped provide the feasibility study at their expense, and that was, it would have been a very big expense, and they paid for it to help develop the El Hardin Hotel. And so you have helped downtown with your community development block grant aimed at Main Street, $138,000, and we're already seeing efforts with the Olveda Building, the Fernandez Building, and Los Reyes Cafe. So, things are happening downtown, and it's wonderful. Here's our goals, we have many goals, and it's goal 1 through 10, but we, we're not attacking them one at a time. As things come up, we, we go for it, and so that's what we're aiming for. We need volunteers, and if you know of anybody that would like to volunteer for downtown, we can use them. So, we need people to contact the Main Street, contact the City of Brownsville. If anybody's looking at this, this is your way to help us in the downtown, and we hope to track our progress and move forward. And so, volunteer, and you'll see some of these photos of events that we've had in the past. We're going to have more in the future. So, contact us, Main Street, Brownsville, and we have MainStreet@COB.us. Thank you very much.
Larry, I want to thank all of your members, board members, all the ones that are here, and perhaps maybe some that may not be here. I've been to some of your events, and they are terrific. I'm loving the energy, I'm loving what everybody's doing. Downtown can be what it should always be, and that is a showplace, and it should tell the story. So, thank you guys for all your work.
Thank you.
Thank you, Larry.
Mayor and commissioners, at this time, I would like to present Ms. Priscilla Alvarez to present the VIDA End of the Year Report.
My name is Priscilla Alvarez. I am the executive director at VIDA, the Valley Initiative for Development and Advancement. We would first like to thank you for your past support and commitment to investing in human capital. For those that are not familiar with our program, VIDA has a 22-year history of investing in human capital. We help the economically disadvantaged adult population as they obtain post-secondary credentials in a demand occupation. We serve the non-traditional adult among the working poor or underemployed, most are first generation in college. Our participants, we help our participants achieve their success in their programs by helping them with financial assistance and our nationally-recognized wraparound supportive services that includes the intensive case management model. Your partnership with VIDA contributes not only to the self-sufficiency of your residents, but the increased earnings of our graduates contributes to our tax system, and it reduces their dependence on public assistance, and this helps us all. In your packets, we included our 2015 Economic Impact Study that demonstrates and reports that for every $1 invested in our program, the community gets back $12.12. This is accomplished by moving people off of public assistance into family-sustaining career employment with disposable income that allows our graduates to have that money that they need to be able to shop and dine and invest in their community. Our graduates open businesses. We track them for about two and a half, sometimes three years after they graduate, and we get a little history on them every time we call them and we hear them when they're buying new homes and new cars. Some of them are opening businesses, and they do that because of the partnership that we have with the City of Brownsville. We're here tonight to give you just a quick summary. The fiscal year doesn't end until the end of September, but we always like to come in and just give you a short report on where we're at thus far. Right now, the average wages of our graduates that are Brownsville residents is $35,443.20. So, we're helping people who are living below federal poverty guidelines, who are unemployed or underemployed with family responsibilities, and we're helping to move them into the middle class. The wages are actually a little bit higher, but right now, we've had a large number of allied health nursing students, sonography students that have graduated and are waiting to take their exams, so that $35,000, we know, will go up by the end of the fiscal year. 49% of the students that we help are between the ages of 25 and 50, and that's the backbone of our workforce. 72% of them are female, with 93% of them living below federal poverty levels are unemployed or are on public assistance. 26% of our participants are single parents with two or more dependent children in the I included a sheet, a little one-page sheet that has some links on there of some reports and studies that we were a part of, that we're really proud of. We were contacted by an organization called the Institute for Women's Policy Research. They were doing, they were tasked by the Walmart Foundation to do a study that looked at organizations across the nation that provided support services to the non-traditional student. I don't know how they found us in Washington, but they did. Somebody was talking about us and the work that we do, so they contacted us and asked if we would participate in that. We were so proud of the results, and the first two links on that one pager will take you to the actual reports. It studied the need for supportive services amongst job-training participants and the strategies that are being used to meet those needs. The research indicates that services like ours are in fact critical to facilitating completion of job-training programs, and it noted that even our policymakers are now understanding and wrapping their arms around the fact that if this is the population that we want to assist in a demand occupation, this is the best way to get them there because of the different barriers that they face. And VIDA has always, for the past 22 years, helped to remove those non-traditional barriers that the students find as they're in school. The third link is to a study that our sister organization in San Antonio, Project Quest, they just completed a 10-year random assignment study, and that study has shown some phenomenal results. It has clearly shown that wages have increased, they're in-demand occupations, they're moving out of poverty and into that middle class. We were excited about it because our, we just completed our five-year random assignment study, and we should be getting the results of that pretty quickly, and once we do, we'll pass those findings to our funders, such as the City of Brownsville. We are confident that our results will be just as good as theirs. I brought one of our graduates here. This is David. He came to us from one of our partners here in Brownsville, Youth Build. I asked him to talk, I heard his story at one of our churches, and was just so impressed because it just demonstrates what you do when you invest in human capital, in your residence. We tell our students, it's not a handout, it's an investment, because when they get to work and start earning that, that good wage, they're able to spend and they generate that sales tax revenue that goes back to the student, to the city. So, we want them to be proud of the fact that their town has invested in them, and I just wanted him to share a story with you.
Good afternoon, city commissioners. My name is David, and I would like to begin by telling you a little bit of my family, my life background. At age of 16, I suddenly had some health problems, even to the point that I ended up in the ICU. And when I was discharged from the hospital, I came across with some financial barriers in my family, a lot of struggling, that unfortunately, unfortunately made me drop out of high school when I was, when I was a freshman, towards the end of my freshman year. And since things got hotter and hotter, I began looking for a job everywhere in Brownsville, but because I didn't have a high school diploma, I find it real hard to get hired. And a friend of mine told me about this program, Youth Build, and I got admitted, and I got some construction training skills, and also the, I had, I was given the opportunity to try to attain my GED, which I completed it, and I became a GED recipient back in 2013. Starting the fall of that year, I enrolled myself in college, and, but before enrolling, I was referred from Youth Build to VIDA, and I think it was a blessing that I was accepted, and ever since VIDA started helping me out, not only financially, but also through counseling, because VIDA, the VIDA counselor that I had helped me throughout, throughout my college career, giving me advice, he exposed me to how it was going to be like when I would enter in the workforce. And it was not easy, though, because I still faced a lot of barriers. I remember that I didn't have a vehicle back then, so I had to ride the city bus every single day to go to college from 802 all the way to Texas, to this area, and sometimes the bus didn't even show up, so I had to get my bike from home and, and take a, make a trip all the way from 802 to Texas Southern College. So, you just imagine how sweated I was when I would show, show up to class. But I still was eager to attain an education, and then I got accepted into the respiratory care program at school, and, and that's how, that's when VIDA became more, more important in my career, because I had a lot of difficulties while I was studying, doing my clinical hours, and Mr. Garcia, who was my counselor back then, he gave me a lot of advice, a lot of encouragement to stay in school, to keep track of my tasks and also my, my assignments. And fortunately, I was able to graduate and complete a program in this past spring semester, and, and I, Mr. Garcia still kept in touch with me, even though I graduated and I exited the program. And it's worth mentioning that this past weekend, I was, I took my first board exam, and I was able to pass it, and I became eligible to take the registered level exam in respiratory care. And now I'm applying, in the process for applying for my state license to become a CRT, or Certified Respiratory Therapist. And upon receiving my license, I'm going to start applying for jobs in local clinics or in hospitals, and, and still, this is not the end of my journey, because I want to further my education, but this is just a little sample of how VIDA transformed my life, and I believe that if VIDA could, could do this transformation in me, I'm pretty sure that VIDA can help every single member of the community who wants to attain an education. Thank you so much.
David, that's a great story, and I know the story is not over yet, so keep going, stay strong. Anything we can do to help you, and VIDA, great job. Thank you.
Thank you. We love hearing these stories. Thank you all so much for your continued support.
Hopefully, hopefully next year, we will have a satellite office in Brownsville.
That's right.
Which we've been asking for, I think, two years now.
We're actually, we are in Brownsville. We have a satellite office now at TSC.
Wonderful.
Yes. We were excited about that. Thank you.
Thank you.
Next, we have consent agenda items, A through O.
Is it approved?
Second.
All those in favor say aye. Aye.
What was that? The general consent. I have a couple items, I'm sorry. Is that the minutes is included in the consent items, isn't it?
It should.
The approval of the minutes.
Yes.
Okay, on number 32, which was the funding for the VHA preservation project, I had actually abstained on that one, because I'm on the board.
Sure.
I don't know if you remember that. And then, if memory serves me, on 35, when the Budget Committee was created, I think you created it with, says it as a chair, and you appointed Rose, leaving one opening on that one that you'll need to fill. So, I don't know, if that's your regulation, I would, I would ask for it to be reflective in the minutes.
Subject to that, corrections?
We'll make those changes.
Is everything else in order for the other consent items? Motion stands.
Second.
All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Motion carries. Item number five.
Next, we have the public hearings. Public hearing in action on first reading on ordinance number 2017-1629, amending Chapter 2, Article 4, by adding Division 6, Sections 2-36 through 2-390, Youth Advisory Council to establish the structure and guidelines to advise city staff and city commission on youth-related issues and community engagement.
Mayor, commissioners, I could not follow up that story any better, but this is all about engaging youth and youth, and creating a youth leadership program. A lot of cities create these programs. Two in Texas that have outstanding programs are the City of Kerrville and the City of Sugarland. This was, I have to say, this was not our idea. This was actually the idea of a group of high school students that have attended city commission meetings, I think, on a regular basis for the past, probably about a year. They, they were looking to get more involved. They approached staff, and this is a way to formalize. So, we've taken this idea, we've also partnered with the National Park Conservation Association that has another group of students that want to also be part of a youth leadership program. So, we've kind of merged the two, and we are creating the Youth Advisory Council under this ordinance. We want to, I want to explain that we want to kind of keep this a little flexible, especially in the first year, because we're, they're learning, we're learning, and we want to make this program the best. So, that's why we built in a little flexibility as far as members and giving the city manager appointments, so that if we get 11, well, in this case, we already have 11 people that want to participate. So, this first year, we're really not going to open applications, we're just going to take the ones that have shown interest, and the next year, we'll open up applications and we'll have this process. So, Kevin is here to just say a couple of words. He could probably not, probably explain it better than I can, so.
Good afternoon, honorable mayor, city commission. Couple of months ago, I came in a concern that there was a sort of lack of representation in the, the youth of Brownsville, and now, months later, now we have something tangible, we have something we can work with, and that is the Brownsville Youth Advisory Committee, or Council. So, what this is, is basically, it's just a group of, you know, bright, young-minded kids who have a passion for government, care for their community and their city, and they want to be a part of it, they want to make it for the, change it for the better, they want to get things done so that people after them can take over and everything can be flowing, you know, with everybody's interest in mind. So, what we're going to be doing, or I hope we can be doing, is that we can get 11, say 11, members. Anybody can apply, anybody who's high schooler, junior, junior, senior, and they'll be a part of a board, just like any other board that we have in Brownsville. And this board specifically will be tending to the concerns and to the ideas that go on within the youth of Brownsville. I'm not calling you guys old, but it's, it's a bit hard to gauge what demographic has when there's no voice in it, and now with this, we have a microphone that can amplify that voice and we can get things across. So, a good example would be now, where I think we're in budget season, right? So, we could say, one of the first things we could do once established is that the 11 of us could take a look at the budget and say, "Hey, you know, take McNair Park down there on Charles Street." We could say, "The basketball court's a little bit rundown, maybe why not we take a little bit of funds from here and, you know, spread it so we can fix the basketball court," or say-
Take a number.
Huh? Take a number. Take a number, oh yeah. But this amplifies it, and that's good.
Yeah, Kevin, no, I, you know, I think it would be prudent to, to, I would say, observation. The first thing you do, when he says, "Take a number," you know, it's, it's something that we all know that there's a lot of needs, there's, what they say, infinite needs and finite resources. So, but, that doesn't want, we don't want to discourage you from looking over our shoulder and taking a look at that budget and saying, "What do you have to offer, Kevin?" Because I tell you what, you speak very eloquently and very succinctly. I think that that's the kind of leadership that we need in the future, and we're not going to be able to encourage that kind of leadership unless we encourage people like you. So, I think we're good.
I'd like to make a motion and invest in our future to approve this item, to establish-
We're still in public hearing. This is a-
Oh, I'm sorry.
I'm going to have to-
If I could, mayor, Kevin, I want to add that we've been working, and I think you would be a perfect candidate to help us with this. I want to establish a, an apprentice or like an internship program for students during the summer, and maybe you can help us, and that way, we can get students in the summer working with some of the assistant city managers, city manager grants, and that way, you start getting a feel of local government. And then, in August, when you go back to school, you can carry all that you learned through the summer, and then we can start looking at the budgets, and you can start telling us, "You know, I think there's duplicity here, we could invest in some of our basketball courts." But that way, you get two, three months of how the city actually operates, and then based off of that, you can start making recommendations. So, I think that would be something cool that we could do.
Okay, now, thank you very much. And if I may add, a bigger thing that, that oversees all this is that we get people, young people engaged and involved in the community, most of all, they start to care for their government, for their city, starting to make informed decisions, so that when they're older and they can vote and they can start doing all these things, they'll be ready and primed for the opportunity.
They will. And I'd like, before we go to public hearing, anybody else want to make a comment, because that's where we go to. But could I have the group that's here on behalf of this effort to please stand up and let's be recognized? I think, I think it's great that you guys are taking the time out. that you guys are taking the time out. Good work. Anyone else have a comment? This is public comment. If not, I'll entertain a motion to close public hearing.
To close?
Second.
All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Motion carries.
Thank you very much.
Okay, just a second, I have, I need a motion to approve.
Yeah, I'll move, move to approve.
Second.
All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Motion carries. You're on your way, Tiger.
And Kevin, I'll help you with your bylaws and all that stuff if you wanna contact me.
Kevin, Kevin, this is your second board. You're already on two boards.
Public hearing number six, public hearing in action on first reading on ordinance number twenty seventeen dash sixteen oh six dash eight, amending the city of Brownsville quota of ordinances, chapter three forty-eight, article nine, historic preservation and urban design by adding and deleting to section three forty-eight dash fourteen ninety-three, section three forty-eight dash fifteen twenty, and section three forty-eight dash fifteen thirty-one and dealing with related matters.
Good evening, Honorable Mayor and Commissioners. This ordinance proposes three main amendments to the Historic Preservation and Urban Design Ordinance. To reduce restrictions for LED signs in the O-11 Historic District, to recapture partial cost of issuing certificates of appropriateness, or COAs, and to reorganize Historic Preservation and Urban Design, uh, and, and, sorry, and Design Review Board, or HPDRB. Currently, LED signs are prohibited except in cases of natural disaster. However, businesses desire to install LED signs because of their longer lifespan and lower electricity cost. The HBO supports allowing LED signs if they are dimmable and either have an enclosed light source or use an indirect light source. The Historic Preservation Office reviewed nearly four hundred applications in 2016 at no fee to the applicants. We've studied the costs the city incurs from reviewing these cases and have the support of the finance department to propose a fee to recapture part of that cost and use those funds for projects within the O-11 Historic District. The Historic Preservation Office reviews three types of applications. Minor improvements, which fall under administrative approval, major improvements, which go to the HPDRB, and appeals. The city incurs a cost of sixteen dollars per administratively approved case, a hundred and thirty-nine dollars per case that goes to the HPDRB, and an average appeal cost of eighty-two dollars. This includes employee labor burden rate, software cost, and onsite visits. We're proposing an administrative approval fee of twenty dollars, a Historic Preservation Design Review Board fee of ninety dollars, and each appeal have a seventy-five dollar fee. There would be no additional fee if the case is tabled by a ruling board or commission. Here are some different examples of how the fee would work. In scenario one, there is an application for minor work such as a new fence, which is within the authority of the HBO, the Historic Preservation Officer, to review. The application would have a twenty dollar fee. In scenario two, the same application is denied by the HBO and the applicant appeals to the HPDRB. They would have an additional seventy-five dollar fee for a total of ninety-five dollars. In scenario three, there is an application for major work such as a new construction. Since new construction is out of the authority of the HBO, it would go automatically to the HPDRB. In scenario four, it is the same application as scenario three, and the HPDRB denied the application and the applicant chose to appeal to the Planning and Zoning Commission. There would be an additional fee of seventy-five dollars for a total of a hundred and sixty-five dollars. In scenario five, the same application was denied by the Planning and Zoning Commission and they chose to appeal here to the city commission for an additional seventy-five dollar fee for a total of two hundred and forty dollars. In 2016, there were no cases that were appealed by the city commission, appealed to the city commission, and only one case that appealed to the Planning and Zoning Commission. If this fee schedule was in effect during calendar year 2016, fourteen thousand two hundred and ten dollars would have been recaptured. Any future funds that would be recruited through this fee would be reserved for Historic Preservation Projects and capital improvement projects in the O-11 Historic District. Some examples of possible projects are to purchase and rehabilitate historic properties in the O-11 District, to create a revolving fund to assist the rehabilitation of historic residential and commercial buildings, to renovate downtown sidewalks to ADA standards, or to upgrade streetlights to LED bulbs. The Historic Preservation and Design Review Board, or HPDRB, has five main responsibilities. The most utilized is reviewing applications for COAs. The current ordinance allows the HPDRB to be comprised of up to eleven members, regular members, and one alternate member. Every member must meet one of fourteen different member qualifications. Having member qualifications are necessary in order for the city to qualify as a certified local government. The Certified Local Government Program, or CLG, is run by the Texas Historical Commission and has several requirements, including having an adequate and qualified Historic Preservation Review Commission. They strongly recommend having an archaeologist, an architect, an architectural historian, a historic architect, and a historian. Brownsville has participated in the CLG program since nineteen ninety-four and was awarded a forty-seven thousand five hundred dollar grant this year to complete a Historic Resource Survey update and an application for a National Register Historic District designation, which helps facilitate the designation process for individual historic buildings in the district. When a building is designated, it may qualify for federal and state tax credits. This amendment includes a reorganization of the HPDRB. To increase efficiency and allow the HPDRB to use the city commission chambers, which offers more resources and better facilities, it's also designed in a way to maintain our status in the CLG program. We are proposing to reduce the size of the HPDRB from eleven regular members and one alternate to seven regular members, to reduce the member qualifications from fourteen to seven qualifications, and to reduce the term length from four years to two years. We're also proposing an orientation for all board members to attend concerning their responsibility, authority, and procedure of the HPDRB within a hundred and twenty days of initial appointment. To achieve this reorganization in a fair manner, all current board member terms would be terminated and application for the new board positions would open and the city commission would appoint new board members. To accomplish this reorganization while maintaining our status in the CLG program, we're proposing to maintain four positions: architect, architectural historian, archaeologist, and historian. And to create three new qualifications that are well-equipped to contribute to the board on historic preservation, as well as offering unique perspectives that are tailored for the need in Brownsville. The three positions are heritage tourism professional, professional engineer, and historic property owner. Here are the fourteen current member qualifications and the seven qualifications ordinance is proposing. We propose to consolidate or remove ten positions to reduce redundancies in members' expertise. Here you can see how the qualifications are consolidated to reduce redundancies and overlap in board members' expertise, to maintain the CLG qualification standard, and provide varied expertise tailored for Brownsville. The qualifications that would continue to the new HPDRB are marked in green. And the qualifications that overlap with other positions are marked in orange. As you can see, the new board member qualifications were chosen not only to reduce redundancy, but also to create an ideal board. This ideal board is made of the seven preferred positions. However, the city commission may appoint individuals with related experience or qualifications that can contribute to the purpose of the HPDRB and who are available, willing, and desire to serve on the board. This flexibility allows the city commission to appoint the best available candidate. This will ensure that the HPDRB will be comprised of highly qualified members. These proposed amendments went before the Planning and Zoning Commission, and they unanimously supported all amendments involving LED signs and Historic Preservation Fee Schedules. However, they were concerned about reducing member qualifications and the size of the board. We addressed their concerns by providing increased discretion to the city commission to appoint members they believe are qualified and desire to serve on the HPDRB. These amendments will help businesses take advantage of low cost of LED signs, provide funds to benefit historic Brownsville, and will reorganize the HPDRB to increase efficiency and maintain Brownsville as a certified local government. Thank you for your time. I'll be happy to answer any questions.
So if I understand correctly, you're gonna be charging for people to get a certificate of appropriateness?
Yes.
So not only do you make them go to hell and back, you're now gonna charge them for it?
Well, we're also trying to increase the efficiency of this program, so it will be simpler to get the certificates of appropriateness.
But the thing is, in the past, we've seen that sometimes people end up coming to the commission because they run into roadblock with you guys.
Especially with the old living.
Yes, exactly. And so that's one of the concerns. And one of the things, you don't have a clause where anything could be appealed directly to the commission. Because you see, the issue is that sometimes people have to go to inordinate amount of money to actually comply with some of the standards. So the thing is, if we're not helping them get there and now we're charging them for it, I, I don't, I don't know if I can agree with that. I mean, honestly, I think that you already have to go through a large process to actually get the certificate appropriateness. I mean, you already, I know there was an issue on one of the buildings with one of the law firms on Seventh Street because they didn't want a certain sign. And that attorney was about to sue us. I mean, they got to the point where they were gonna sue us. Because you guys just didn't wanna come up with a permit, you see? Cause you weren't willing to meet them halfway. So that's my concern with a lot of this stuff. I'm all for historic preservation. And I live downtown, I mean, the city's been instrumental, I'm trying to get everything together. But I can tell you, I've heard some horror stories. So every time you bring us this type of stuff, it's, it's a little concerning. And, and I, and I don't see anything where, I mean, the city manager or the commission could actually go in and basically waive all this. Because if, it's gotten to a point where you guys don't give a permit, and then people just, I mean, they just get frustrated, they stop building. And it's been happening downtown, we're working on downtown revitalization. So I don't know if we should be adding more layers of bureaucracy.
What you did was you threw in the money, the, the fees with a good, overall, a good ordinance. And, and now there's no choice but to, if you're against the fees, you gotta be against the whole plan.
I have a question.
No, go ahead. Just, just respond a couple of things, Commissioner. I think you made a great point when you said it's, you call it hoops and you call it bureaucracy. But we are a cost recovery system. So there is, there is, there has to be a process. And we're trying to cost, do a cost recovery at this time. So again, what we're presenting to you is what, it's a recommendation of the department. US Commission can change, can do how you wanna do it. But what we're doing as an effort is making sure that if there is an additional, there's a staff time, we do have to do a cost recovery. And, and I know you mentioned you guys and, and stopping us and holding off. Is, we're trying the best we can, but we do want that the commissioners to sit there and say, okay, what do you want us to do so that we can clear it up? And you notice with what we did was reducing of the, the board. Because we also find out getting individuals do the quorum. So again, we're, we're here, commissioners, at your discretion on what you wanna do to add or change. We're solely up to that.
And, and I don't think people mind paying a fee. It's like when you wanna open a restaurant. You know, there's a fee with health. You know, there's a fee with fire. People don't mind paying. I think what they mind is that you make them go through all these hoops. You see, and we've said, you know, I don't see anything here where, okay, if I go apply for a certificate of, what do you call it, appropriateness?
Appropriateness.
Let's say I show up and I have a building. And if you guys were, were to say, okay, these are the five points you need. If you come back with those five things, we'll give it to you. But what ends up happening, I come back with the five and then you give me a six and then a seven. And I think that's what really gets people ticked off. It's not the amount that we're paying. It's the amount that, it's the bureaucracy you're making us go through. And, I mean, we're seeing it with buildings, inspections. So it, I know that we're mixing apples and oranges, but at the end, the overarching theme of us adding all these layers of bureaucracy and people can't open up businesses, they're spending inordinate amounts of money to actually do this. And really, what they wanna do is they wanna open up a business and contribute sales taxes to our system.
But each level has had its own set of fees.
Yeah, and that's-
Every level has its own set of fees.
I think we need to have Commissioner-
Thank you.
Sorry.
So, a couple of years back, before all of you were here, Commissioner Portio and I sat right in that front row. Charlie's not here, but I believe you were here, Mark. And Jeff Johnson was assistant city manager. And we did live through several hours of some of the horror stories that Commissioner Delion is mentioning. Although it was in a residential issue, but it was also about this. One of the, the very big messages that she and I got after that was that the ordinances and makeup of the board and function of the board needed to be updated because it had been a very long time since that had been done. So we asked Jeff to look at best practices along with city staff and review what the absolute best, hottest historic ordinances and such were around the state or in similar areas. I take it that this is the result of all of that that took several years to do, which I'm glad that you did it in a careful fashion. I think one of the big things that came up out of that several hour-long hearing that we sat through was that the makeup of the board. And it should not be an arbitrary decision to approve or not approve a certain, a certain permit, but rather a decision that was made by people who were qualified educationally to, to make those decisions. The other thing that came up was whether or not the board members had ongoing education during their term. For instance, as a physician or as a lawyer, you have to do continuing medical, medical education or legal education to stay updated with what the latest was and all of that. So I, I don't have as much of an issue with the actual fees if the process is going to work more efficiently and the decisions will be made more expeditiously. But I also have the question about the education. So is it enough to say that I'm an architect? Or should I also have ongoing education during my term that will keep me up to date with the specific things happening within the historic designation? Or, or sorry. Second comment I had was that I did go to one of the, the national historic hearings in Houston earlier this year because my house was there. My house happened to be the only house that was being considered that session. All the others were cities or districts, historic districts of cities. And there were quite a few. And so I wholeheartedly agree with the city of Brownsville applying for that historic designation in the downtown area. Because I saw firsthand how that hearing is carried out and how it can help different cities of different sizes. So, did that-
No, yes, you're, you're exactly right, Commissioner. And, and I think you, you're bringing in the, the whole ecosystem, as you mentioned, as the, the board itself. Is we're, we're bringing you different about the historical overlay, we're bringing you changes to ordinances, we're doing the one-stop shop, we're doing more of the customer relation where they're coming at one area. So this is just a component of it. But again, it's, it's a cost recovery. And we always gotta look at it on our part, is, yes, when we bring the cost, the idea of the efficiency is already there already. And that's why we're changing the efficiency behind it. And we are trying to minimize those horror stories. And believe you, Commissioner, we get the horror stories too. And what we do is they don't leave without talking to one of us. Because we don't want that to happen. And we're doing checklists of that. So it's, this is just a component of what we're getting to. And to answer your question, Commissioner, yes, Commissioner, this is just, we're getting to that point now. Okay, what, what do we need? Cause we started with what we, we thought to meet the needs, and now we're just refining it.
If I may address your point directly, it is true that in the past, we've had difficulty having the same members attend the meetings to meet the quorum. And because the board is so large, we, we sometimes get members that are different. When you table an item and you bring it back, we have different members that are attending. And then we have different ideas. So we're pushing people back and asking them to fix different things. By reducing the board, what we're trying to do is be able to bypass that problem by having the same members attend and having the members being on the same page when we're issuing comments. So that should alleviate that problem.
Anyone else have a public comment? I have a public comment. I've been through this procedure myself. And I think that I'm pretty much aware of exactly some of the pitfalls. The question, I think, may arise either out of the fees, but more so is out of the appropriateness of the process, to be honest with you. And, you know, for some of us who are very much in favor of historic restoration and have done it, we all went through a lot of hassles that were unnecessary. I'm, I'm looking at this particular amendments to what we're doing, and I see a lot of light in this process. I think this is a good step forward. Now, the question that I pose to myself is, should I be charging for a process that hasn't been determined as to whether as much light is gonna be shed on this thing as I think it could be? I'm sitting there thinking, is there any way that we can forego the fees for a certain period of time until we are sure that this process is actually working? And we suspend any fees during a period of time, but be happy to come back and visit them at a later time. That's just my observation.
I mean, I, for me, Mayor, I think, I don't, I think if we abate the fees for about six- six months, that would work.
I kind of like to see how it's working, because I'm actually going to be restoring something else pretty soon. So I would like to see, and I don't want any favors, but I do want to see how the process works.
And let me tell you, Mayor, I'm restoring my home, and it's also a historical home, but it goes back to a very interesting debate. It's like if I were restoring a classic Mustang. You know, I have a door and it's got some rust. I have to decide, do I buy a new door and just put it on there, or do I actually remove the door, fix that part, reseal it, and then paint it again? I'm restoring another one, I'm just buying. So there's people who decide to buy new things. I can tell you, I looked at like six leveling companies, and they all just want to put some new beams underneath my house. That's not restoring.
No, no.
That's actually just fixing. You see, stuff like that, and it's a philosophical debate as to who and how people want to restore their things.
I urge you to talk to Larry Loff, and if you go take a look at the shutters that he has, he actually Googled them, and some of them, if you look at them, are really sweet, but some of those shutters are actually about 100 years old. And, I mean, he bought them off eBay or things like that. So there's 101 ways to skin this cat. What I'm going to suggest, though, we can be here forever, is that would it be advisable that, subject to the abatement of the fees, the rest of the substance of this amendment go forward?
Yep.
Yes.
Okay. So anybody else have public hearing?
This is a public hearing? No, I'm saying this is a public hearing if anybody else has.
No, I realize that. So if not, I'll entertain a motion to close public hearing.
Motion to close.
Second. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Motion carries.
Should we prescribe that they come back in six months? Do you want to set a timeline?
I would suspect that we abate it until we have another progress report. In other words, just abate all the fees.
Right, but in other words, when do you want the progress report? I think it's important.
You commissioners are going to tell us when we want it, because you're going to hear the complaints.
Okay.
Six months?
I would suggest a year, because I think that there's some momentum going downtown, and there may be some more people interested in it, but within six months, that's too short of a time.
Well, let's abate it for a year, but let's have a progress report in six months. How does that sound, guys?
Sounds good.
Okay. Subject to that provision, Madam Secretary, then I'm going to have a motion, subject to that, Mark, motion to approve.
Motion to move.
Okay. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Motion carries. Thank you all so very much.
Thank you. Public hearing number seven, public hearing in action on first reading on ordinance number 235-2017-022-S to allow a wireless communication facility in Dualee A for 1.14 for Acacia Lake Gardens subdivision block eight located near Impala Drive.
Good evening, Honorable Mayor, City Commissioners. This is a request for a specific use permit to allow a stealth cellphone tower on a 1.14 acre property located near Impala Drive and Caye Mil Pabre. This property is within the Loop corridor, which is, it was meant or it was envisioned to be commercial, and so it generally supports the request. Here's an area of the property, and the existing surrounding uses to that property, which are composed of single-family homes and some, you know, some businesses that fall under the general retail category. We have received written opposition to this case, and so this case is considered to be protested, and we receive about 26 percent, and the minimum, as you may know, is 20 percent of the signatures. And so PNC has recommended to support the specific use permit to allow this WCF or this stealth cellphone tower. And so the one condition that was imposed or recommended was that they need to comply with telecommunications ordinance, which is chapter 338. And that was the recommendation by PNC. We have the applicants represented here. They were interested in doing a presentation, and that will be up to your approval.
What is the commission? Want to hear the presentation?
The applicant is here, and they have a, I'm sorry, a presentation, so they were interested in doing that presentation for you guys, so if you're okay with it?
Definitely. We would like a time limit.
The three minutes?
How much time do you need for your presentation?
I anticipate no more than 10 minutes, says the applicant.
Okay, 10 minutes.
Thank you.
10 minutes, please, abide by the 10-minute rule.
Thank you. Good evening, Mayor, City Commissioners. My name is Bev Francis, 112 East Pecan in San Antonio. I'm the attorney for Ecoside, which is a national developer of telecommunications facilities. We're excited about this opportunity, because what this project brings to an important part of your city is a project that facilitates three wireless providers and allows them to address and resolve significant gaps in their wireless service. Now, when we say, why is there a significant gap? Well, you certainly know as leaders of the community, business members, residents, that Brownsville is growing. Your population has increased from approximately 80,000 in the early 80s to now over 180,000 in the current population census. You can see that your growth is far exceeding both the state of Texas and the United States as a whole. Parentally, you all are ranked, as you know, by Forbes Magazine, US News &amp; World Report as an up-and-coming seed, a place to move, students to move and work. And as a result, you're continuing this growth and new blood coming into your community, such as the young man that gave such a heart-stirring testimony provider. The demand for wireless, though, creates a demand on the systems. This slide that I'm showing you is a slide that was presented by the FCC Commissioners. It was, shows that 92 percent of us, and this is a little dated, but 92 percent of us have cellphones, 68 percent have smartphones, and what caught her attention is almost 50 percent of us have tablets. Just two weeks ago, approximately three weeks ago, the government announced for the first time that there are more wireless devices than citizens, men, women, and children in the United States, 1.2 wireless devices. How that impacts this particular part of your city, as you know, the average Brownsville household now has five wireless devices at a minimum. If you think about your own situation, the number of iPhones, iPads, GPS, the dependency that we have on it with over 50 percent now of your community having cut the cord and have become total wireless-dependent residences. Of critical importance is the E91 connectivity. Gustavo Garcia with T-Mobile, he's manager with the RF, will address you momentarily regarding the critical nature that this area needs to be able to offload the demand of the E911 calls. Additionally, the reverse E911 is so important to all of us. Those, all of us have received those alerts in the middle of the night, waking you up to either a natural disaster or an event that you need to be prepared for. Recently, San Antonio had five tornadoes hit the ground at one time. For the first time in my life, I got a notice that said, "Take shelter." I wouldn't have heard that, one was two miles away. So these portions of your community actively depend and need to have that connectivity for 911. Additionally, as you bring in the new residents, people moving into your city, they're demanding the Internet of Things, smart utility meters, be able to remotely check your security systems. Again, all of this demand that we have, it requires that wireless connectivity. You, as a city, encourage your citizens to become connected. You have applications that are available and actively encouraging your citizens. You have two very, very prominent social media. You're on Facebook, which you provide not only the social events, the activities, but also use as a method of giving alerts out to your citizens. You also now have over 1,000 Twitter followers, which is a significant number to be able to use for your residents to receive those important notices. Education, I couldn't speak any better or any, in more detail than the young man that was before you. If he had gone through the process now, where he could have the connectivity that your independent school district offers and your RT, UT, RTB, excuse me, tongue-tied, programs are being offered online. Literally, you can go all the way through without having to have those stories of getting rides to school. But again, those homes have to have the connectivity. Now, before I review the site with you real quick, I want to thank Ms. Hernandez and her team. They have worked with us for several months going through to make sure that this site fully complies with your code requirements. We appreciate their recommendation for support. We greatly appreciate the Planning and Zoning Commission recommendation. The site itself is a 50-foot-by-50-foot compound, which has been strategically placed through working with Ms. Hernandez to comply with all your residential setbacks in accordance with your code requirement. The setbacks are to the actual compound itself, not the towers. So Ecoside has worked so closely with her team to create this site. The compound, again, just to touch on respecting the time, will accommodate three wireless providers, which will cut down on the proliferation. And what's exciting about this particular tower is what is called a stealth tower. Instead of the antennas being on the outside with the antenna arrays, the triangles that you see, Ecoside has worked closely with staff and its design team and construction team to design a, what's called a slick pole. The antennas are within the canisters of the pole and do not extend outside. We have worked closely with Ms. Hernandez in placing the site, using the current vegetation, as you can see, plus enhancing it with vegetation that complies with your code. We've provided a co-location letter in which Ecoside commits to actively pursue co-location for the three wireless providers. And let me assure you, nothing is more important to Ecoside than infrastructure reliability. They accomplish this two ways. One, they work with national companies such as Ayersman Engineering. We've provided you with.
Three minutes left.
I'm sorry.
Three minutes left.
Thank you. Ayersman's Engineering, and also through working with the city permitting department, threw me off, I'm sorry. If I may, if I'd like to move forward and introduce Gustavo Garcia to explain the significant gap.
All right. Good afternoon. So the image that you see in front of you is a general map of the area, what we call our coverage letters. Each one of these coverage letters, is one of the colors represents the level of coverage, the level of signal that normal users will get on their homes. In this particular image, red is good, yellow is medium, and green, you start not being too happy with your cellphone service. This is our current situation right now. The three sites that are located in this area are the ones that are providing the general coverage. And what we're trying to achieve by the new tower is obviously improve and ensure that the coverage on every residence on this location actually gets secure by the use of the new tower, obviously also by offloading all the different volumes of calls that are being handled by the rest of the towers. This is part of the planning and city commission, the letter that you guys have seen before. And then one of the items that I wanted to make sure we analyze, we have made sure that, oh, okay, so we have made sure that all the different tower assets have been evaluated. So we're not just want to, Ecoside doesn't want just to build a tower for the sake of building a tower. We evaluated every possible asset that we have in the area, and from the T-Mobile perspective, I can tell you that we have exhausted all the resources for the current towers that we have, so we need this tower. It's not just for the sake of it, we really need the tower in order to comply with the rest of the network. One item that I wanted to address before we run out of time, it's on the tab, the red tab that you guys got in your presentation. This was extra information that we added, that we thought pertinent added.
One minute?
We wanted to share that in the last 30 minutes, the police, the Brownsville Police Department has received a total of 4,300 E911 calls using your network, using our network, sorry. This is not just T-Mobile customers, this is everyone with a cellphone that needed help, and place a 911 call was routed through our network. Within this area, 50 percent of those calls were issued right in the area that we want to place a tower. So it's a total of 600 calls, roughly 600 calls, and we just wanted to make sure that the availability or the insurance of these 911s to happen, they are required to be done in pertaining coverage. And in order to achieve coverage, we need the tower. In order for us to continue ensuring the services for E911, we need the tower.
Thank you. I'm sorry.
Eight seconds.
Eight seconds, all right. Well, let me just finish with by saying, thank you so much for your attention, thank you for your support. And thank you for taking time.
What was the nature of the opposition?
I'm sorry, the. I'm not sure if we have actually the public that might want to share why they were opposing the cellphone tower, but I think some of the concerns was the health-related effects that, you know, cancer and all those things that may be caused by cellphone towers. I think that was pretty much the extent of the concern.
So it's the radiation that comes off these towers?
Yes, correct.
Is that basically what they were talking about? And I don't need any response. I think we got the materials in here that you got from the American Cancer Society and stuff like that. Was there any opposition because of just the nature of the tower, which is 100-foot structure?
Anna, how was it that PNC came to the decision that it was structurally safe to put the tower here when we strictly have? I drafted the ordinance years ago. It says that we cannot have cellphone towers, even if they're stealth, within the residential area. How is it that PNC decided to bypass that particular ordinance?
The ordinance allows, or it has a different requirement for distance, and it makes a differentiation between a stealth cellphone tower and a monopole. And in this case, it's a stealth cellphone tower. And for that particular type of antenna, the requirement is 100 feet from the base of the perimeter of the structure, right, to the property line. And in this case, I think it was for us, we were looking at the land use itself, we think this is a semi-landlocked area, it's vacant, it's a little on the back.
This is structure, is this structure, should it happen, I'm just messing with you, but would it happen to be 150-mile win? And if it did knock it down, is it within the 100 feet of all residential structures?
I think they did some analysis, but just to clarify, for us, I think for PNC, we were just looking at it from a land use perspective. And so the condition, so that they still need to comply with the chapter 338.
We played in there as kids. I know the property.
Right.
It's, there's nothing there. There's really nothing that the landowner can do. But our ordinances do stand where we have to take care of our residents. We cannot have.
Right, absolutely.
You know, these kinds of structures that close to a residential structure. That's what my question is, you know, within the 100 feet, the 100 feet height, does it fall within, you know, is it close to a home? Does it hit close to a home?
I think, I mean, I know that there was some engineering analysis done, and I think that wasn't the case, right?
May I address?
Sure. Commissioner Bev Francis, again, first and foremost, the 100-foot setback we've measured, and it's in the site plan, it's to the compound, so there's an additional 25 feet. The actual tower base itself is 125 feet plus from any of the residential requirements. Also, in the engineering letter that we submitted from Ayersman, these towers are designed so in the unlikely event, like you said, a catastrophe, they're designed to bend like a soda straw. And that is set out in the sealed engineer's letter. And that's accomplished through both the diameter and width of the central core to create what they called a bend point, and also through the foundation specifications that Ayersman's prepared that match your coding requirements. So on two fronts, we feel very confident that we comply with your ordinance in meeting the setback. We feel like this will accomplish so many significant goals for the neighborhood, particularly the E911 service that Gustavo was pointing out as a public service.
I don't think the connectivity is anybody's issue. I think everybody wants to be connected, and I think everybody should be wireless, and I think we should have it. I think the problem arises as to these towers that are throughout the city is, you know, should we be thinking about going underground? That's, I think that's the true issue in the long run. I mean, that's, I mean, I think every city is going through the same problem, so. Mayor, I want to ask, is there an appeal in this case? Is it going to need six votes? Okay. Okay, first of all, public hearing, anyone else? Have now entertained a motion to close? You're opposed? Okay, would you please state your name for the record? Okay, would you please state your name for the record?
Would you please come to the podium? Hi, I oppose this because, for one, it affects my mother. Okay? So, as a resident, I think you should be listening to us, the people that live here in Brownsville, not to outsiders, because they don't really care if we get sick or anything. We do have research on it. Let me see. Well, right here says that they do have RF radiation from cell towers. I wasn't prepared to talk, sorry. Do property owners have the right to oppose? Yes, we do. This is why we wrote to our commissioner, and we talked to Channel 4 about this issue. We also talk about the effects that it has to protect yourself, your family, your friends, and neighbors against the dangers of cell towers collapse, and to fight against having the installation of a cell tower, which would adversely affect the character of your neighborhoods. And it goes on and on and on. All I want to say is that I oppose it.
Okay.
Their property value is going to go down. And these are poor residents. They're not going to be, so their property is not going to be worth anything. Their taxes is going to, their taxes is going to go sky high. How do I know this? Because I talked to my friend who's a real estate agent. And on this, they're not saying it, because they don't care, because it's not their community, it doesn't affect them.
Okay.
I just want you to be, to remember that. You guys are elected officials.
Sure.
And of course, I do know you, Judge Ben Nies, he was my professor.
Well, we won't hold that against you, okay? But be sure and give, be sure and give the city secretary your name and how, contact information, and this is your mom, and her, and put her name down as well.
Yeah, she's the one that's really affected.
Sure.
My sister talked about it. She did talk to people, because she does work in Harris County probation officer.
And you got, you got another?
So, we are asking.
Okay, thank you.
My name is Beatriz Saldana, and I live in that area.
Sure.
And I love my neighborhood. It's very quiet. And I, and I wish we could just stay like that. I know that cell phones are important to some people, not to me, I don't care.
I'm sure.
Yeah, I just have a TV, and if you want to take the TV away, you can take it. I have lots of books to read. Well, anyway, our health is not very good, the people that live on that street. So, that's why we don't have more people, they cannot walk, they cannot come. I can barely walk myself. I just had surgery. I'm recovering. But I, I hope and pray that you think about us and, and, you know, put that tower somewhere else. I'm sure there's a lot of places that you can put it.
Well, thank you for coming.
Yes, sir.
Thank you for coming. And take care of yourself and get it well.
Yes, sir.
Hello, my name is Glade Garza, I'm one of the daughters also of the neighborhood. I just want to say that I oppose it too. It's more of a devaluation of the property. My kids play around, we still visit my mom. And I know they're talking about the height of the tower, but walking distance, I can walk 10 steps, and I'm there where they want to put the, the actual tower. So, I think it's more of the devaluation that there was a concern, and the citizens, they don't care about cell phones, they don't care about, why don't, because I think more of the cell phone is the people around it, but the people that are going to be close to that tower, they're not complaining about that, so I think that's what they should consider more than, because there's a lot of vacant properties, especially on the commercial side, that they can put, and I think that's more appropriate to have it.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
Is there someone else or not? Young man, come on up.
Hello, I'm Cesar Covelo. Not an engineer or a real estate agent, so I can't defend that section. However, the fact that this tower emits radio frequencies means that the radiation is non-ionizing, meaning it won't cause cancer. According to the American Cancer Society, I believe it is, cellular phones do not cause cancer, or else everyone would have cancer in their legs by now, I'm sure. I really just wanted to clear that up, as really shouldn't be a case against this tower being there.
Okay, well, thank you very much.
Hi, I'm William Burke. We had a similar issue in West Brownsville. The 100-foot tower will be a noticeable blight. Bird watchers will certainly see the tower when they wake up in the morning. The mayor was right, but too, looking too far ahead. Yes, it would be nice to have everything underground, but right now, there are utility poles going by everybody's house, and there could be small antennas, low-power antennas on utility poles all around the city. It would no doubt cost more than having one giant, high-powered installation in, in the middle, but it certainly wouldn't be a blight any more than utility poles currently are a blight. So, we could utilize, or they could utilize hardware that's already there to accomplish the same thing. I, I don't know anything more about cost, but I'm just offering that information. Thank you.
Mayor, one minute to respond. Mayor Bev Francis, again, if I may, regarding the alternative sites. This before you is the search ring, the quarter-mile search ring that is required in order to resolve this significant gap. And what I wanted to show you were the, there are no available sites within the quarter-mile search ring. In fact, the tower location had to be actually outside the search ring, as you can see, in the northwest portion. They worked and spoke directly with the Catholic Diocese, and Father Vega wrote, "I'm sorry, I've not been able to talk with you, I consulted the diocese about leasing, and unfortunately, I can't lease the church property. I hope you could find a place for your project." So, there are no Bible alternative sites.
I think most of us are well aware of the, of the area. I know I am. Thank you very much.
Thank you, sir.
Anybody else? Okay.
Mayor, I need to make a couple of comments. I know that my neighbors are against it. I have spoken to Sharon, I had spoken to her sister, I had spoken to several people. I did receive the emails. I am a person that's affected by the lack of cell phone communication. My service provider has given me a unit that I hold within my home to be able to not pick up Telcel or not pick up Movistar within my, within my home, because that's just what happens when you live along the border. Okay? But, you know, taking into account that, you know, I do have seven wireless devices plus Wi-Fi on my TVs, and, you know, my, my, my life revolves around technology and, you know, and we're affected by it. You know, when we, on the street that we live on, you know, it's a block away, but, and I know that, like, you know, Ms. Saldana said, you know, she could care less, she doesn't use the phone. You know, if you want to take away her TV, you know, you can. But that affects, you know, the rest of us are affected. You know, my, I'm sympathizing and I'm dealing with, with the residents of my area, but we do need to understand that the need is there. You know, my parents live across the street, and they are of the same mind frame. My brother moved out, they removed their wireless, they removed their router, they removed everything from their home. And then, my dad comes to me and he says, "Esta mura no funciona." You know, and I said, "Well, you need to run your updates, you need to run your software updates, you need Wi-Fi, you need, you know, the connectivity to be able to have your phone working." And, you know, like they have said, we do need the access. You know, whether it's, you know, they're retired, so whether it's access to their Facebook, or whether it's access to whatever it is that they're doing during the day, you know, this is a need. But however, I do stand firmly, even though, you know, we do bring up the fact that it is a stealth tower, I do stand firmly that, as the author of this, of the ordinance that stands in place with cell phone towers, whether they be stealth, whatever they may be, within the residential area, we cannot have it because of safety within the residential area. And I know that, you know, upon approval, at least my vote, upon approval, it's going to bring the backlash from those others that we have denied over the years. We've been denying them and denying them and denying them, because we do not want these towers within the residential areas, you know, for various reasons. I don't agree with the radiation comment, you know, I don't agree with a lot of the concerns that my neighbors have. But yet, they are my neighbors. I am their representative, I have fielded their calls, I have taken their concerns. And independently of that, I do stand firmly by the ordinance that we have drafted that says, you know, that these cell phone towers do not belong in the residential area.
Anybody else other than that, I'll entertain a motion to close public comment?
If I make one quick question? This is just for T-Mobile, right? This is just T-Mobile?
No, sir. Actually, it will accommodate a total of three wireless. We're fortunate to have T-Mobile as the first tenant. That's what's the importance of resolving the significant gaps that they all have. So, it's certainly not, we're just lucky to have them as the first tenant.
Okay, now, do we have a motion to close public hearing?
Motion to close.
Second?
All those in favor say aye?
Aye.
Motion carries. Okay, now, it's an action item, so do I hear a motion to approve or disapprove, or, and it's got to be unanimous, is that correct?
Well, you need six votes.
Okay. Is there a motion on the floor to approve?
Put a die.
Okay, motion to deny, second?
I will second deferring to that.
All those in favor of denial, say, signify by, because it's got to go unanimous as well, right?
No, just approve.
Huh? Just a motion to approve?
Just a motion to approve.
Okay, so just mere majority. All those in favor say aye of the, to the denial?
Aye.
Aye.
Okay. Motion carries, the denial will be in effect. Thank you all very much, okay?
Public hearing number eight, public hearing in action on first reading on ordinance number 235-2017-047 to rezone from dwelling Z to dwelling G for 0.19 acres for Lot 19, Block 5 of Villanueva, located at 2135 US Military Highway 281.
This is a request to rezone the area district of the property from dwelling Z to dwelling G. The proposed use is a duplex. The property is located within the loop corridor, and it's supported by the proposed rezoning. Here's the existing land use map, which is primarily comprised of single-family homes and some light retail. And so, PNC has recommended to support the rezone from dwelling C to dwelling G, and we receive no written opposition.
Okay. Anybody here on this issue? Public hearing, if not, entertain a motion to close.
Motion to close.
Second.
All those in favor say aye?
Aye.
Motion carries. Is there a motion to approve?
Motion to move, sorry.
Second.
All those in favor say aye?
Aye.
Motion carries. Item number nine?
Public hearing in action on first reading on ordinance number 235-2017-048 to rezone from light retail G to light retail H for 0.1917 acres for Lot 25, Block 1 of Canyon Valley subdivision, replat located at 3,700 Menchaca Court.
So, this is one of two requests for the same property. This is a request to rezone the area district from light retail H to, light retail G for a 0.19 property located on Menchaca Court, and the proposed use is a triplex. The property is located within the town corridor, which supports the proposed rezoning. Here's the existing surrounding uses of the subject, or around the subject property. And again, we have mainly apartments and multifamily. And so, PNC is recommending to support the rezone of the area, of the area district from light retail G to light retail H, and we receive no written opposition.
Okay, there's 22 mailouts and no written opposition, correct?
Correct.
Public hearing, anyone here on this issue?
Motion to close public hearing?
Second.
All those in favor say aye?
Aye.
Motion carries. Is there a motion to approve?
Motion to approve.
Second.
All those in favor say aye?
Aye.
Motion carries.
Public, consideration in action on first reading on ordinance number 235-2017-048 S to allow a triplex, triplex to light retail H for 0.1917 acres for Lot 25, Block 1 of Canyon Valley subdivision replat located at 3,700 Menchaca Court.
So, this is the same property or the same case that we just, that I just presented. Again, it's on Menchaca Court. The request is to, is for a specific use permit application to allow a triplex in light retail H. Again, the future land use plan supports the proposed rezoning. And again, the surrounding uses are mainly multifamily and, you know, apartments and single-family homes. And so, PNC is recommending to support the proposed rezoning to allow a, I'm sorry, the specific use permit application to allow a triplex in light retail H. We receive no written opposition.
Okay. Any, any opposition to this?
No opposition.
Okay.
Motion to close public hearing?
Any, anybody here on this issue? This is the first reading, but there is actually, anyway.
Motion to close public hearing?
Hearing, do I hear a second?
Second.
All those in favor say aye?
Aye.
Motion carries. Is there a motion to approve?
Motion to approve.
Is there a second?
Second.
All those in favor say aye?
Aye.
Motion carries. Item number 11?
Public hearing in action on first reading on ordinance number 235-2017-049 to rezone from dwelling A to dwelling G for .30 acres for Lot 1, Block 1 of Ninfah Bae subdivision located at 2815 West Loco Road.
So, this is a request to rezone the area district from area district A to G. The property is .3 acres and is located on 2815 West Loco Road. The future land use plan supports the proposed rezoning. This property is located within Transition West District. And here's the existing land uses surrounding the area, primarily comprised of, you know, residential or single-family homes. Here's the street view of the property. And so, PNC is recommending to support the rezoning from dwelling A to dwelling G. And again, the proposed use is single-family home.
21 mailouts and zero oppositions, okay. Public hearing, anyone here on this issue? If not, entertain a motion to close.
I'll move.
Second.
All those in favor say aye?
Aye.
Motion carries. Is there a motion to approve?
I'll move.
Second.
All those in favor say aye?
Aye.
Motion carries. Item number 12?
Public hearing number 12, public hearing in action on first reading on ordinance number 235-2017-050 S to allow used car lot in the dwelling retail G for 0.217 acres of the south half of Lot 8, Block 3, and Manzano Partition of the Wickmore Track located at 6385 Paredes Line Road.
So, this is a request for a specific use permit to allow a used car lot in dwelling retail G. This property is a .21 acre property located on Paredes Line Road, 6385 Paredes. The future land use plan supports the proposed rezoning. This property is located within the town corridor. So, here's an aerial of the surrounding land uses. So, we have a little bit of a mix, mobile home park and medium industrial warehouses. Here's the street view of the property and the site plan, since it's a specific use. And so, PNC is recommending to support the specific use permit to allow a used car lot, and we receive no written opposition.
Okay, no written opposition and 20 mailouts. Anyone here on this issue?
Public hearing.
Close.
Second, is there a second on that one?
Second.
All those in favor say aye?
Aye.
Motion to approve?
Second.
All those in favor say aye?
Aye.
Motion carries. Item number 13?
Public hearing number 13, public hearing in action on first reading on ordinance number 235-2017-051 to rezone from dwelling A to apartment H for lots 1, 2, and 3, Block 1 of Lakeside Subdivision, located at 701 Lakeside Boulevard.
This is a request to rezone from dwelling A to apartment H for a .74 acre property located on 701 Lakeside Boulevard. The property is located within the downtown Riverside District and, which is, allows for the proposed use. Here's an aerial of the property. Again, the existing land use uses are apartments or multifamily as well as single-family Here's the street view of the property. And so, PNC is recommending to support the rezoning from dwelling A to apartment H, and we receive no written opposition.
Okay, again, you have 20 mailouts and zero opposition. This is public hearing, anyone here on this issue? If not, I'll entertain a motion to close.
Motion to close.
Is there a second?
Second.
All those in favor say aye?
Aye.
Motion carries. Item number 14? Item number 14.
Public hearing number 14. Public hearing in action on first reading on ordinance number 235-2017-053 to rezone from professional office A to general retail A for 3.15 acres for lot 1, block 1 of Sela subdivision located at 827 North Central Avenue.
Madam Secretary, just a second. We have, on item number 13, I misspoke and there was, public hearing was closed, but there was not a motion to approve.
I'm sorry.
Motion to approve.
Second.
All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Motion carries. Item number 14, you've already read, so go ahead. Make your presentation.
So this is our request to rezone for professional office A to general retail A for a 3.15 acre property located on Central Avenue. The property is within the transition east district and supports or allows for the proposed rezoning. Here's the, the existing land uses surrounding the area. We have a bit of a mix, single-family, professional office, as well as a multifamily in the area. Here's the, the street view of the property. And this is a potential render of what the, the owner intends on doing with the property, and that's why it's requesting the rezoning to general retail. PNC is recommended to support the rezone from professional office A to general retail A, and we receive no written opposition.
Forty-two mailouts and zero written oppositions. Anyone here? Public hearing. Anyone here on this issue? Now I'll entertain a motion to close public hearing.
Motion to close public hearing.
Second.
All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Motion carries. Do I hear a motion to approve?
Motion to approve.
Second.
All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Motion carries. Number 15. Lupe, you're up.
Public hearing number 15. Public hearing to discuss the city's proposed fiscal year 2018 budget.
Good evening, Honorable Mayor and Chief Commissioners. This is our first budget meeting to discuss the proposed budget, proposed budget for fiscal year 2018. On your, on your areas, there's a couple of, there's a handbook. This handbook is basically the detailed expenditures that were used to compose the, to present the budget presentation. The presentation is, is, the purpose is just to provide a general overview where we at on a summary basis. Also included a part board, a part board presentation. There's a handout in case you wish to follow that one or on the screen. Topics to be covered are listed on there. Tax rate, budget summary, highlights, personal summary, general fund summary, non-bonded debt, other funds, and city credit rating. The first item to be covered is a tax rate analysis. I'm gonna be talking a little bit more in-depth on the tax rate analysis, but basically in truth and taxation, we're required to go through a formal process in order to, to set our, our tax rate. And again, I'll, I'll cover that in a subsequent agenda item, but basically, we are required to do a calculation on how much the tax rate is. Basically, the tax rate is divided into portions. The MNO, which is, gets transferred to the general fund, and the debt service, which is transferred to the sinking fund to pay off debt, to debt payments. In the last, since fiscal 2012, we've maintained a tax rate of .700163. We're proposing to maintain the same tax rate for this year. Like I said, as truth and taxation requires to do two other calculations. One is called the rollback tax rate. The calculation is, the tax, rollback tax rate is .746583. Basically, that rollback tax rate is, is the maximum tax rate the city could, could adopt without triggering a rollback election. The second tax rate, tax rate that needs to be calculated is the effective tax rate. The tax rate calculated for 2017 is .68834. Basically, this tax rate is, is the, is a tax rate that will generate the same, same revenue on the same properties that were, that were in the same tax rate, which means 2017, 2016. That's right. Because we're proposing a tax to maintain the same tax rate, which is, is above the effective tax rate, this, this triggers an, a, an increase, this is a percentage increase over the effective rate of 1.71%. This is the history of the property tax rate and the distributions. Like I said, and since 2012, we've maintained the same tax rate, and this is the distribution with the MNO, which is general fund and the debt service fund proportions of it. The average tax distribution from 2017, 2018, basically, we're maintaining the same percentage that goes into the tax rate and the general fund. This is certified property tax rule. Of course, you see the incremental increases since 2007. Those increases, of course, attributed to building permits that have been issued out. Steadily since 2012, we maintain that the steady building permit valuations have been issued. For 2017, we, we project that we'll be about in the same area between 2015 and 2016. Budget summary. This is the budget summary of all the funds. These are all the funds on the left-hand side, all the funds that are, that are maintained by the, by the city. First one being the general fund, and the list goes down on the left-hand side. You have a summary of all the revenues transfers in, then you have all your expenditures and the transfers out that are accounting for. One of the items on there to, to point out currently right now, again, we're, this is our first budget. We're still working on, we will be having at least three more budget meetings. Right now, we have, we have a variance between revenues and expenditures of about $5.3 million. And again, we'll be working with the, with the city managements and the department directors to narrow that gap. Convention tourism has a positive fund balance. Debt service fund has a negative variance on there, and I'll, I'll talk a little bit more, more about that. Landfill has a negative variance of 1.1 million 3, 73,000. And as I go through the other funds, I'll, I'll explain a little, elaborate more on these items. This right here is a summary of the general fund, budget by account classification report. On here, you have the different revenues generated by the general fund, and then all the expenditures by classification. You have your personnel services, materials, supplies, buildings, and so forth. And to the right-hand side, you have your proposed draft budget. On the total revenues, right now, we have estimated 1 million, excuse me, 102 million dollars. On the expenditures, 107 million dollars, leaving a out-of-balance of 5,300,000 dollars. Budget highlights. On the general fund, property tax revenues will, will increase about 727,000 dollars or 2.64%. 2018 projection for sales tax, basically, we're using 2016 actual numbers and increasing it by 1%, noting that 2017 was not a good year in the sales tax so far. Now, elaborate a little bit on that right now. POB cash transfer, we, there are, we, they are estimating a, an increase of about 634,000 or 7.37% above 2017 budget. The Cameron County Bridge transfer that we get for the Tomates, we're using the same budget amounts right now. We're still waiting on the county to give us that, that amount, that projected amount. We anticipate it to be around the same, same amount of money. For budget, on the different categories, material supplies, building maintenance structures, building equipment, they have slight increases on there, request by the departments. Miscellaneous services, there, there was a decrease initially submitted by the departments. The total net increase from the 2017 approved budget is about 662,000. These are the material supplies departments have requested above their 2017 approved budget. One of the items to note, personal costs. If you go to the third bullet port, bullet point there, for, for 20, for, for, new for 2018, personal costs, there's, there's three items that are really affecting the budget right now. You have medical, medical, medical cost increase that are, that are gonna cost 2,95,000 dollars. You have contract obligations with the unions, police, and fire of colas of 975,000. And then you also have the full effect of the compensation study that, that wasn't there. These items were not there last year that are there this year of 1,800,000. Personnel salary, this, this is a, this is a pie graph of all the personnel of all the operating funds. You have regular employees, you have 772, police 244, and EMS 187 positions. This is just a, a authorized personal positions by all funds. You have all the general fund and all the various other funds on there. For 2017 and 2018, we're, we're proposing to maintain currently the same staffing levels of 1,200, 1,203 positions. General fund summary. On here, you'll have three, the three bar graphs on the left-hand side represent the revenues. You have revenues for fiscal adopted 2017, amended to 2017, and then the proposed in 2018. Similar on the right-hand side, you have your adopted for 2017, amended, and then the proposed. This is a detailed, and now, this is detailed expenses reflecting of those bar graphs. The expenditures on here, they're not by classification, they're by function. On here, general government, public safety, public works. Again, the difference between the revenues and expenditures is 5,300,000. This is a pie graph of all the revenues and cash transfers. Where are the, where are the revenues that the, that the cities gets? Of course, the, the main one is property taxes of 27.7%, followed up by sales tax, 27.64%. Then you have fees and services about 20.47%. On the expenditure side, again, by function, you have public safety, but the majority of them at 56.22, 22%, followed up by, what is it? Culture, cultural recreation, and then general government. This is a percentage of expenditures for the amended budget line items that are by classification, which is personnel and various lineups on there. As you'll indicate, personnel services on there for 2017 amendments, about 67%. The proposed budget, the percentage of personnel services is increased about 72%. This is a bar graph representing the differences on the proposed budget amendment indicating in green and the blue, blue amended budget for 2017. Again, the, the largest one that sticks out there is the personal services. For 2018, a pie graph, again, representing the same information, 72% is personal costs. Unassigned fund balances through fiscal 2017, we're projecting for 2017, the last line item on there, projecting a 16.5 million dollar fund, unassigned fund balance, which translates to 15.42%. Sales tax revenues, again, this is the, the schedule that indicates the actual collection. Sales tax have increased throughout, since 2010 and throughout the period. For 2017, again, we're not having that good of a sales tax here, so we amended our budget to decrease that amount below 2016 actuals. For 2018, we're, we're not, we're conservative estimating that we'll, we'll maybe get 1% above the 2016 actuals. That, that is based on the last two months' worth of positive sales taxes that were collected. Again, that's something that we need to monitor as we go. This is a sales tax comparison between 2016 and 2017 through the month of June. On actuals, we actually have a decrease through the month of June of 516,000 at 2.46%. Based on the original amount, the original budget that was, that was approved for 2017, we had a decrease of almost 932,000 dollars. The amended budget, we adjusted the, we made a budget amendment to adjust the amended sales tax figure. We're, we're about to be break even there, or just have a positive of .5, .57%. This is just a summary of all the department submitted expenditures. Next one is the bonded debt service fund. Again, the, the first two bar graphs on the left-hand side gives you your revenues and expenditures, and the right-hand side is the 2018 revenues and expenditures. As you, as you'll show on the expenditures, which is indicated on the expenditure, on the orange expenditure columns, you show a decrease from 17.6 million to 17.2 million. That's basically debt service payments are, are going down. This is a breakdown. This is a detailed breakdown of those, of those, of that, of that, of that bar graph. Again, the 17.2 million dollars is, is all property taxes and also contributions from other, what we call self, self-supporting debt. That, that includes debt that was CWG, public, paid, the airport PFC funds, and 4A and 4B contribute to cover some of the debt that was issued on behalf of them. And then towards the bottom, you have the debt service payments. So these are all the, the debt that the city has that we use to offset the, to, to make the debt service payments annually. This is the, this is all the outstanding general obligation debts the city has. As you'll see, for 2018 through 2024, they, they were kind of expediting our debt service payments, but, by 2020, 2025, our debt service payments will go down. That's, of course, if we don't issue any debt, but that, that's items that we always come back to and issue debt. Again, we're talking about self-supported debt. Those are the entities, 4,767,000 total outstanding that, that's gonna be supported by tax-supported debt. It's a million, 1,300, excuse me, 135 million dollars, 600, excuse me, 135 million, 685 million dollars. Other fund summaries, you got your convention tourism fund. Again, the same format is gonna be, you can have your two pie graphs on your left-hand side, it's gonna be your revenues and expenditure summary, and the right-hand side, you can have your 2018 proposed items. On this ones, we show revenues in excess of expenditures. Now, we're on the, the expenditures portion, we're, we're maintaining the same amounts to each of the entities that, that utilize these hotel motel taxes. We're proposing to keep the same amount. Community development, this is a grant, basically revenues equal expenditures on here, 3.4 million dollars. Non-bonded debt, you see again, the, the increase between 2017 and 2018, that's attributed to a note payment on some land purchased for the landfill. Landfill fund, again, you have your expenditures over your revenues, that's on the two right columns. That is attributed to, again, the same noted land purchase for the operations of the landfill and attributed to increases, compensation increases on here, the difference on there. And again, this, we will work on this fund to try to narrow the gap on this. Airport fund, you have a revenue and expenditures on your right-hand side balance. Bridge fund, bridge fund, you'll see that right now, we, we don't have this, we're using the same numbers as last year. We're waiting for the, the county to give us those numbers so that we could work on them. With those numbers, the transfer that we're proposing, 1.5 million, that's something that we could work on and increase it to offset the general fund deficit right now. Motor vehicle parking system, you have your, on the right-hand side, you have revenues in excess of expenditures. One of the items to note here is any revenues in the pit mark, or is it parking meter coin fund, in excess of a certain limit, gets transferred into a, into a escrow account that is used to fund any projects in the downtown area. That's nominally increased, I believe it was 30,000 or 40,000 last year and similar amount this year. Public transit fund, this is the public transit fund, this, we, we created this new presentation. Hopefully, it's a little bit more explanatory of the operations of the public transit. Basically, on the operating revenue, you have your revenues and expenditures equals 6,22,000 dollars. On the revenue sides, to those on the, on the left-hand side, general fund provides 40% of the funding, tax dot provides 9% of the funding. Charges for services, these are bus fares and various fares that are collected at the bus, at the fare box level, 70%. They have rents, about 7%. FTA contributes about 21% of that, and then there's other categories contributions. That, that's the operating. This is the capital. On the capital, there's, there's also similar capital projects on here. Items to point out here are the 2.2 million dollars of capital and planning expenditures. FTA covers 81%. General fund covers 19%. This is a breakdown. Bronzokallcent, revenues equal expenditures on here. And the last thing is, right now, the city currently maintains a, a outstanding financial stability. Moody's, you have a AA3, Standard Support AA, and Fitch Investors AA minus. Next steps on this budget process, on August 11th, the city will be filing a draft, and again, it's a draft budget with a city secretary. The draft budget needs to be on file at the city secretary, city secretary's office for public inspection. That needs to be there 30 days before we approve the budget. August 8th, we'll have a special meeting to discuss the proposed tax rate. August 22nd and 29th, we'll have the first and second, first, what's it, August 22nd, we'll have our first special meeting to discuss the tax rate and the budget. August 29th, we'll have a second meeting to discuss the tax rate and the budget. August 11th, we'll have, excuse me, September 11th, we'll have a public hearing to, on the tax levy and approve the budget by resolution. September 12th, a meeting to approve second hearing of the tax levy, and hopefully by October 1st, we'll start the new budget year.
Is this public hearing? Any, I'm sorry, there comes Brad.
I just wanna say that I, I'd really like to see us focusing on drainage. Over the last ten years, uh, I've heard several times, it never rains like that. That was a hundred-year rain. When you hear that several times in ten years, you, you realize, no, that wasn't a hundred-year rain, that's to be expected. And so we need to face the inevitable and, and focus on the drainage. And this year, we haven't had any of those extreme rains, uh, and, and that's a blessing, except we've been short on rain, uh, overall. But, uh, I, I encourage you not to let them overlay another street that floods, it's a waste of money. Uh, we all like those nice, smooth streets, but if it's overlaid and it's a street that floods, it doesn't stay nice and smooth for very long. And, uh, I haven't studied the budget enough to suggest where to take it away from. Uh, I, I appreciate the fact that you're looking at keeping the same tax rate, and, and I encourage you to do that. But, uh, as far as, uh, uh, priority, uh, I, I believe drainage is more important than a lot of the other things, because if your car is one that got messed up, uh, in that flood, or if you're in one of those low-lying areas that, uh, that have waves go into your house because a car went by, uh, you really don't care about the other issues and, uh, because you, you, your personal issue got so bad. But anyway, uh, but if you would, focus on the drainage.
Okay, we won't, we won't build an ark, okay?
No, right. Thank you.
Thank you, Brad. Uh, anyone else? If not, we'll, um, have a motion to close public hearing.
Actually, uh, continue public hearings. It's just, continue.
Yes, sir.
So we don't have to close?
No. Continue, continue the public hearing because it's gonna be filed.
All those in favor say aye?
Aye.
Motion carries.
Thank you.
Public comment?
Uh, Mayor, for public comment period, we had no one sign up for the public comment period.
Okay, action, I mean, item number seventeen, consideration and action to appoint two city commissioners to the Amigos del Valle Inc.
I will read number seventeen, consideration, action to appoint two city commissioners to the Amigos del Valle Incorporated. At this time, we'd like, uh, for you all to consider in appointing two commissioners to replace Commissioner Debbie Portillo and Commissioner John Villarreal.
Okay. Any volunteers?
I'll volunteer. Let's amigos.
Okay, okay. Ben, Commissioner Nice?
No, wait, no.
Any other takers?
I was the, uh, the.
You were the last amigo.
The alternate.
We need, we need two amigos, not three amigos.
Mission is far. Mission is very far.
Should we, should we do it to Jessica? I'm just kidding. I'll tell you what, we, we've got one commissioner, let's, let's, let me, let me think about how we're gonna go to the next one, okay? If you don't mind.
Okay.
So we, we have an action, uh, a motion to appoint Ben Nice.
Second.
All those in favor say aye?
Aye.
Okay, on the, on the next one.
Number eighteen, consideration, action to appoint a city commissioner to the Brownsville Convention and Visitors Bureau, and that's also to, uh, take the place of Commissioner John Villarreal as the next official non-voting member.
Okay, and I'm gonna, uh, appoint Rose Gallon.
Please, second, second.
All those in favor say aye?
Aye.
Motion carries.
Thank you.
Item number nineteen.
Item nineteen, consideration, action to appoint one member and two city staff members to the Main Street Advisory Board.
Okay, and I'm going to appoint Commissioner Ben Nice as the commissioner on that one, and the two city staff members is up to you.
Did you have any staff members?
We do. Um, good evening, Honorable Mayor and City Commission. So today, we are requesting three appointments to the Main Street Advisory Board. As stipulated in our bylaws, the board shall consist of nine members, seven shall be community members and two shall be city employees. The qualifications for the community members are that they are downtown property business owners, um, property and or business owners, supporters of downtown redevelopment and knowledgeable about economic development, historic preservation, architecture or other disciplines. And the qualifications for the two city employees are that they are from the Planning Division and the Office of Grant Management and Community Development. Um, currently, we have seven board members, and there are two vacant positions, however, only one is designated for a community member, and we received one application from the public who meets the qualifications and we recommend for this appointment. Additionally, we are recommending to appoint two city employees to the board. One city employee is no longer employed by the city, and the second city employee has asked to be replaced. Now, all these recommendations will fulfill the requirements of the bylaws.
Okay, so it's Sylvia and Francesca.
Yes.
Uh, from the staff and Commissioner Ben Nice. Is that all right, or does it have to be a community?
Well, it does have to be a community member, um, as stated in our bylaws. However, I know that you live downtown, um, but we did have the applications open for three weeks, and I'm not sure the city secretary.
We only had that one, Mr. Armando Iba.
Okay, well, if, if I'm not eligible, then, then I don't need to be on there. Is he not eligible, does that?
I would need to check the, the bylaws.
I, I think as a commissioner for downtown districts, sir, uh, you could probably show up and, I mean, uh, and, yes, because it's an advisory commission, so even, even if they want to do something, they, you.
Well, if you want to appoint me, then I'll show up to the meeting, we can take it up there at the, in that group to see whether.
Sure.
Well, then I move to appoint, uh, Commissioner Ben Nice.
Okay, do I hear a second?
Second.
All those in favor say aye?
Aye.
Motion carries, and you've got your two staff members. Thank you so much. Uh, item number twenty one.
Action item number twenty one, consideration, action to acknowledge the Cameron appraisal district chief appraiser certification.
I'm sorry, I'm sorry, the most important, one of the most important ones, consideration, action number twenty, consideration, action on resolution number twenty seventeen dash zero four four.
Consideration, action on resolution number twenty seventeen dash zero forty four, expressing opposition to construction of border wall in our community and the entire border region.
Uh, Mayor, City Commission, uh, there is an ordinance that we left on your de- I'm sorry, a resolution on your desk. Uh, there were a couple of drafts going around, but the one on your desk is the final one and is on the mayor's desk for signature upon passage, so, um, I don't know if Commissioner Delion wants.
Sure, um, you know, when we were first approached, we've have, we've been going back and forth with the debate over the wall for many years. And, uh, so I've actually taken the time to meet with, uh, different Homeland Security, Border Patrol, C B P, and, uh, when you talk to the sector chiefs, they all tell you that they need, they have different needs depending on their sectors. Uh, here in Brownsville, the federal government came without asking us for our opinion, built the wall. And we have parts of the city that were left on the other side of the wall, so we have citizens in our community whose property was basically taken. I know some of these lawsuits are still arising out of the U S Attorney's Office. So, um, going in line with Ronald Reagan and saying that we should always defer to local officials, I am wondering why the federal government ever came and asked us. And now that we have a movement to continue building a border wall, um, I would like to promote this resolution where we oppose ourselves to, we oppose, or the city opposes to the construction of more wall within our city. Uh, we don't think we need it, uh, we've asked for a virtual wall in the past, uh, we continue to ask for that wall in some of the downtown areas, and, um, and further looking at the cost of this, it would cost, uh, after, it would cost that, to maintain this wall after seven years, more than it would cost to build it. So, uh, in times of budget deficits, in times when we all have to tighten our belts, I wonder why the federal government wants to build a wall and not give us more money for drainage like we've asked, not give us more money for streets, not give us money for fifty or sixty more officers, which would actually make our community more secure. So really, what I'm asking is, I'm promoting a resolution because we oppose more of this wall being built in our community. If other communities feel that they need this wall, or in other states they feel that need, they need this wall, well, I would encourage them to promote it with the federal government. For the time being, here in Brownsville, I don't feel we need more wall. And if they want a wall, I think there's other ways to approach it, including a virtual wall, like we've, uh, actually asked the federal government in the past. So, uh, we're not saying that we are totally against everything or different needs in different sectors, but we feel that the need for Brownsville right now is a virtual wall, especially for our downtown area, so we want to express opposition to this. Uh, I don't know if anybody wants to add anything, uh, before I read the actual complete resolution.
I completely agree, um, I think this is an easy resolution to support because there are so many reasons not to have a wall. Um, it, it, it's kind of silly in my mind to even consider it. Um, so very, very clearly, easy to, to, um, agree with you, and I think, um, the community as a whole supports our decision as well.
Before you go to that, Commissioner, uh, I wanna recognize everybody that's standing, everybody that's still left is here for this item, so I'd like to recognize the community members that, that are here in support of this item, uh, and so they're behind me.
Sure.
I would still urge the commission and staff, what is, what, what do we still have? In other words, previous administrations, when we had this discussion, please sit down, thank you. When we had this discussion in the past, we proposed virtual wall, they gave us a permanent wall. University was allowed to create their own. We have an agreement with Department of Homeland Security that allows us to have a temporary fence, the one, the ones that you see on cement, on cement blocks. Those are temporary fences, which was an agreement that the city of Brownsville came to with the Department of Homeland Security so that we could build our east loop. That's the reason why we have a temporary fence. If we move forward with this kind of a resolution, will those agreements that we had with the Department of Homeland Security, uh, become null and void, uh, legal? Or, no?
No. I, I was part of that, I, I was part of that legal team that, that worked out those deals, uh, that, and this is, this resolution doesn't affect it in any way, but as, as the, as the president administration would say, I've got pen in hand, ready to sign.
If I may, Mayor, uh, may I read the resolution, sir?
Sure.
Um, a resolution of the City Commission of the City of Brownsville, expressing opposition to construction of the border wall in our community. The City of Brownsville, its mayor and commission champion the core values of inclusiveness and tolerance and welcome everyone who seeks to realize their dreams and build their families in the city of Brownsville. Whereas the U S Mexico border region is a beautiful, diverse and unique place where people and wildlife from north and south live side by side in relative peace and harmony among some of the continent's most cherished spectacular landscapes, flora and fauna. There is a proposal to build a wall along the entire U S Mexico border. The U S Mexico border is now more secure than ever has been. Apprehension of the border region are at historic lows and Brownsville is among the safest cities in the entire United States. The existing border wall and militarization have created human rights crises in the border region that has caused significant social, cultural and economic harm to our community, resulting in unnecessary human suffering. The existing border wall requires enormous maintenance costs resulting in hundreds of millions of dollars per year and further financial burden on the U S taxpayer, and remains the most expensive and least effective means of securing the border, according to many security experts. The existing border wall and fencing has caused substantial environmental damage, including catastrophic floods, erosion, degradation of public lands and facilities, and destruction of critically important wildlife habitats, and threatens to harm more than a hundred species in the border region, including dozens of rare and endangered species such as the jaguar and the ocelot. These and other environmental harms would be exacerbated by construction of a border wall. A virtual wall would better suit these concerns. Whereas the ecotourism industry brings in five hundred million dollars annually to our region via sites and attractions, including the Sable Palm Sanctuary, the Nature Conservancy, Southmost Preserve, Santa Ana Wildlife Refuge and the National Butterfly Center, all totaling more than four thousand acres. These attractions are not only anchors to our region's tourism industry, but also serve as the most pristine habitat for endangered species in the United States and Mexico. Whereas the city of Brownsville has long maintained shared heritage traditions and friendship with Matamoros and the rest of Mexico, a border wall and its offensive and damaging symbol of fear and division that will increase tensions with Mexico, one of the United States' largest trading partners and a neighbor with which communities such as Brownsville in the border region are linked culturally, physically and economically. Whereas the border wall is an affront to the city's core values of inclusiveness and tolerance and a threat to economic and cultural vitality, integrity and stability for our community. And whereas the mayor and commission desire to publicly declare its opposition to proposed construction of a continuous wall or other physical barriers in our border community. Now therefore, it be resolved by the City of Brownsville, the City Commission of the City of Brownsville, the Brownsville residents, express opposition to the construction of the border wall in our community. And I guess, uh, passed and approved this, uh, first day of August.
Well, now it's time for a vote. Uh, this is an action item, do I hear a motion to approve?
Motion to approve.
Second.
All those in favor say aye?
Aye.
Aye. Motion carries.
And, uh, if I may, if I may, Mayor, if, uh, our President Trump is listening to me, I really hope we could get fifty or sixty more officers and money for infrastructure. That is what the real needs here in the border. Uh, we don't need more border walls, we need police officers to help us maintain our security, and we need money for drainage and infrastructure. That is what I ask.
We're, we're not Fox Night Watchers, I don't know.
I would love to be on Fox News and debate anybody, Mayor.
Okay, item number twenty one.
Item number twenty one, consideration, act- an action to acknowledge the Cameron appraisal district chief appraiser certification of the City of Brownsville twenty seventeen tax rule.
Honorable, Honorable Mayor and City Commissioners, this is just an, uh, an acknowledge, my, acknowledging item to acknowledge the Cameron appraisal district chief appraisal certification of the City of Brownsville twenty seventeen tax rule, and the reports are attached.
Motion to acknowledge.
Correct.
Second?
All those in favor say aye?
Aye.
Motion carries.
Item number twenty two, consideration and action to acknowledge the Finance Director's certification of the estimated ad valorem tax debt collection rate for the tax year twenty seventeen and the excess debt tax collections for tax year twenty sixteen.
Truth, truth in taxation law, um, states that the state, that the taxing unity, uni- uni- unit that levies a tax debt must consider anticipated collections in calculating a debt component of the rollback rate. They must estimate the tax rate for twenty seventeen, and they might, and they must calculate the excess debt collections for twenty seventeen. I, the designated tax collector certify the estimated tax collection rate for tax year twenty seventeen will be a hundred percent. I also certify the excess, uh, debt collections for twenty seventeen will be, uh, zero dollars.
Action item to acknowledge, is there a motion?
Motion to acknowledge.
All those in favor say aye?
Aye.
Motion carries, item number twenty three.
Item number twenty three, consideration, action to acknowledge the Finance Director's calculation of the city's effective and rollback ad valorem taxes for tax year twenty seventeen or fiscal year twenty eighteen.
Um, this item, uh, basically, the Finance Department is tasked with calculating the effective tax rule and the ad valorem tax for twenty seventeen or fiscal year twenty eighteen. Uh, this presentation, we usually, uh, provide it as, as refresher or some introduction information regarding the how, what, what's the relevance of calculating the tax rates. Uh, I'll go over, uh, this, uh, presentation is also in your hand, in your handbook, if you wish to follow it or it's on the screens. Uh, the Texas Constitution sets out general requirements in truth and taxation, the Texas legis- late, excuse me, uh, truth and taxation requires a taxing unit to calculate two rates after receiving a certified appraisal rule from the appraisal district. Uh, these two exact tax rates calculated from the twenty seventeen effective tax rate worksheet and the twenty seventeen rollback tax worksheet published by the Texas Controller of Public Accounts in accordance with general requirements under the truth and taxation. Generally, the taxing entity must do the following actions, determine and publish the effective tax rate and the rollback rate, decide how much revenue is needed, calculate the tax rate required to raise amount, is the amount needed, and publish notices. Hold, uh, two public hearings, say the proposed tax rate will exceed the, uh, rollback tax rate or the effective tax rate, adopt the tax rate, and if necessary, administer a tax rule, a rollback election. Therefore, principles in truth and taxation, property owners have a right to know about increases in their property taxes, appraised values, uh, to be notified by the estimated, estimated taxes that could result in the new valuation. Tax entity must publish its notice for, proposed property taxes, tax rate in the newspaper or at least seven days before first public hearing. Tax entity must publish, uh, special notices and hold two public hearings before adopting a tax rate that exceeds the lower of the rollback rate or the effective tax rate. If the taxing entity adopts a rate that exceeds a rollback rate, voters may, may petition the election to limit the rate to the rollback rate. The effective rate, this is the fir-, this is the first, uh, uh, tax rate that we calculated. The effective rate is, is the, is the tax, the effective tax rate is calculated, is a calculated rate that will provide the taxing entity with about the same amount of revenues they received in prior year on properties taxed in both years. If property values rise, the effective, effective tax rate will go down and vice versa. The calculation process starts after the chief appraisal delivers to the taxing entity the certified appraisal tax rules and the estimated values of the properties under protest. Uh, the Texas entity chief financial officer determines the following information that is applied by the chief appraisal and his certified tax, the total praise, uh, and taxable value of properties, the total. the total appraisal taxable value of new improvements, and the total taxable property annex since preceding year, uh, the, to calculate twenty seventeen effective tax rate, the taxing entity must first determine the total twenty sixteen, uh, property sec, property taxes, the effective and rollback rate calculations begin with the property taxes and values for at least, for the last year at the time of the rate calculations, these totals include all supplemental corrections that have occurred to the tax rule since the last year's certification and tax rate adoption, the effective tax rate enables the public to evaluate the relationship between the taxes from the preceding year for the current year, based on taxes that would, that would produce the same amount of property taxes if applied to the same property taxes for, on both years. The rollback, rollback rate, the rollback rate has two components, the maintenance and operation, usually referred to, that, that's the general fund, uh, MNO is the daily operation of expenditures, debt in, interest sinking rate, this is to repay bonds that secured by property taxes, the MNO portion of the tax rate is a tax rate that would be needed to raise eight percent more operating funds than it, than the taxing entity levied in the preceding year, this calculation is similar to the effective tax rate calculation, the debt, the debt rate portion of the, of the tax rate will need to be, will be needed to pay the taxing entity's debt payment in the coming year, this portion of the calculation does not depend on prior year's debt taxes at all, it simply considers what the taxing entity will actually need for the current year, a portion of the overall rate used to retire the debt may raise, may, may rise as high as necessary without triggering a threat of rollback rate, the MNO portion, however, raised, may rise only eight percent. Uh, rollback taxes reduced by the one cent sales tax collection, uh, during the sales tax and general obligation bond election of August of nineteen ninety-one, voters of the City of Brownsville, Texas, approve of proposition one, with the passage of proposition, the voters adopted a half-cent sales tax used to, used, used tax to reduce property tax rates. Um, the top hand, left-hand corner is a calculation of the effective tax rate, that's a rate that I was talking about on the left top part portion, you got the calculated, uh, tax rate for tax year twenty seventeen of point six eight 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 three four, the proposed tax rate that we're, we're proposing to maintain is the same one of point seven zero zero one six three, this is a tax increase of one point, one point seven one percent, on the right top part corner, this is a tax rate comparison between what got adopted last year and what we're proposing this year, this would be a no tax increase, on the rollback rate, this is the rate, again, the maximum rate that you could, uh, adopt without, uh, triggering a rollback election, uh, the total amount on, on that one is point seven four six five eight three percent, and the proposed, uh, tax distribution, again, that, that was presented in the earlier presentation, uh, the amount that will be go to the general fund of maintenance and operation, sixty-four point one seven seven percent, and for the debt service, uh, debt service would be thirty-five point eight two percent, uh, that concludes the presentation, this is just an acknowledgement of these calculations.
Who'd acknowledge?
Second.
All those in favor say aye?
Aye.
Motion carries, item number twenty-four.
Item number twenty-four, consideration and action to acknowledge the Finance Director's calculation of a tax increase if the proposed tax rate will exceed the lower of the roll, rollback tax rate or the effective, uh, tax rate.
Actually, the last, the last, uh, slide that was there was the calculation that, that's relating to this, uh, agenda item, and this is just to, uh, acknowledge the calculations that I just, um, presented.
Who'd acknowledge?
Second.
All those in favor say aye?
Aye.
Motion carries.
Who'd adjourn?
Second.
All those in favor say aye?
Aye.
Motion carries.
I need a new computer.